Start this up in the wood, please. First up, we will start with the pledge of allegiance. So, I'll just write it back here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next up, just to alert everybody, this meeting is being recorded, and if anybody in the audience is recording it, please let us know for our records. Thank you. First up, we have the vote to approve the minutes of March twenty fourth, twenty twenty-two open session and executive session meetings. Has everybody had a chance to read through those?
Yes.
Yes. Anybody have any corrections or issues?
Nope.
In one direction, it's not a correction per se, that I have in the open minutes on page three. We have, there's this duplicate of a statement, Mr. Sebastian two-two-two. Then there's the motion, then after that it says, Mr. Sebastian two-two-two again, he's a strike one of those.
Strike second one. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, seeing the order of discussion or objections, I would extend my wish to approve both of those minutes as written, except for the strike.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, are we still doing roll calls, Joe?
Uh, yes, uh, no, you're on screen, sir. You're, you're hurt. There's nobody at home tonight.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All those opposed?
Sorry, that was an eye roll.
I forgot how to do that. It's a lot.
Next up, we have the warrants.
All right. I refute and approve the following, uh, school expense and school payroll warrants. Uh, school expense warrants, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, two hundred ninety-nine thousand, ninety-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. School payroll warrants, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, one million, sixty thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and one cent. I wish to enter them into public record.
All right. Moving right along, next up, we have the Bristol County Sheriff's Office COVID dog presentation.
Yes, I'm sure Shannon is going to lose her mind.
Right away, the sheriff, as well as the captain up front, if you'd like to have a seat up front. Where the dogs are.
Right here. I'm leaving.
Thank you for the lead on that.
I'm leaving six hours.
Disappointing dog.
Hunter is at the babysitter. I'm leaving six hours with water, so I apologize.
That's okay. I want to welcome the sheriff and the captain, uh, who were really the folks who reached out to us, um, and also other, uh, officers that, uh, basically introduced the, the canine COVID dog, so all the districts in this county, and many of us took advantage of it. Uh, I'm sure the sheriff will explain that. Um, this is scientifically based stuff, uh, that's how we went with this, as you know. Uh, you've got all the articles and stuff that I sent to you. So, welcome to Norton, thank you for supporting us.
Thank you, Dr. Norton, and this chairman, members of the committee, uh, thanks for giving us the opportunity to come and talk about this. This, this program is really exciting. We're the first, uh, departments in the country to have COVID canine. It actually went to the schools, they go to public, other public facilities, and they'll go to ball fields as well, locker rooms, and, um, detect COVID. Which, which not only is of course a public safety, uh, benefit, but in addition to that, it, we found that it's been phenomenal. In regards to the reaction we're seeing from the educators, from the students, in, in this crazy time that we've all been living in, with the pressures of COVID. There's a lot of fear and anxiety, and when the, when these, these dogs come in, they're, they're lapsed. They, they just bring everybody, uh, into a more peaceful, calming place, and, uh, they get a sense that we've got law enforcement with, with, with canine coming in, it's doing something good for them, and, and I have to tell you, uh, Superintendent Biata, he's been phenomenal. He, when we came here before, the system that they have in place here became, was, was really a leading system that they put in place to notify parents if there is somewhere where we indicate to be able to make sure that there's this proactive approach to it. And, uh, that partnership is so critically important for, for all of you, us, and of course, the families of the community. And so, um, we're now at twenty-eight, uh, schools across the county, we're adding them all the time. Uh, we're also, uh, in five different, different communities, and there were more communities asking us to commit. Uh, we're getting ready to, we're about, I think, um, um, Captain's speaking, but we're, we're about ready now to have them certified as well as therapy dogs. So we can get dual benefit there, and actually, we talked about, if you're familiar with Friends of Jack, have you heard of that? We spoke about, about, um, maybe having him also service the hospitals where these kids are to win help there. And, and, and the last one I see before, I'll turn it over to the captain. You know, we even bring them into our place, you know, I'm sure you all recognize that it's tough to get workers, people who have them on overtime and things like that, it's very stressful. They come in, and then when they're doing their searches, they take them to central control. Our staff get this benefit. And, uh, and so they, they thank the, uh, captain and handler every time they come in, and ask them actually not to leave, but they gotta get back to work, so, but, but this is, I'm telling you, this is a cutting edge, and, um, and the fact that this school system here has embraced it, uh, as one of the first in the country, uh, you all, I'm actually proud of, and, um, we'll do whatever we can to continue. With Dr. Maillot and, uh, all of you, whenever we can to support this difficult situation of people's lives. To the captain.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, superintendent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, thank you for, for having us. Um, so Norton was one of our first schools, and we're, we're proud that, you know, the superintendent reached out, and you have a great superintendent too. He's, he's, uh, yeah, he, he's, uh, we'll talk about it afterwards, for the brownie points. But he's great. I, I mean, we, we text back and forth, whether it's weekends and, you know, and stuff, he's, he always answers, you know, even when he's away. So he's a, he's a great man to deal with, and you're blessed to have him. I'm glad we, uh, we met, so, um, you know, the training, it, it was, um, it was fun. It was definitely interesting. Um, the sheriff saw, um, how it all started, was, you know, like last February. I was actually on a detail in Attleboro, and the sheriff called me and said, hey, I saw this great thing, and, you know, and, um, I'd like to, you know, get some more information, and a couple of months go by, we get some valuable information, and the sheriff, you know, uh, looked at it as a public safety, uh, tool, like, like he said, you know, um, you know, we're out with, with our other canines looking, you know, for drugs and stuff like that, but the sheriffs, you know, um, wanted to help in a different way, and it's, it's worked. You know, uh, masks, you know, that's how we started with positive COVID mask, we put it in a jar, and basically play hide and seek with the dogs. And, um, you know, when your body, it's kind of like almost, um, you know, the dogs that detect cancer, or, you know, epileptic seizures and stuff, your body actually gives off an odor. And that's the same thing when you, when a person, um, has COVID, your body's fighting that infection and gives off an odor. So, uh, that's how it started. We, we got the dogs in, in April, and we started training in May, and graduated in August, and started the school year, and we haven't stopped. It's been non-stop, um, like the sheriff said, twenty-eight schools, five school districts. Um, I was just down in Sagamore yesterday. I was at the Montessori school down in Sagamore, down in Barnstable County, so we're, we're spreading out, and, um, it's a great program. The, um, you know, and on the, they are therapeutic dogs, you know, uh, that wasn't their title, um, they're still going to do the COVID, but, you know, the sheriff, once again, to help out in the community, what he does best, uh, thought, hey, let's just try to, let's get these, these dogs doing even more. And, uh, so our, our dogs will be certified, uh, we're probably going to be starting next month in May, uh, probably be up and running by June. And they'll be certified therapy dogs too, and just, you know, to help out in the community, you know, as well.
The other thing is that, um, some people have asked, and others, we've spoken to them, have asked, you know, is it dangerous for the dogs to get COVID? And they actually, they actually don't. Um, and, uh, that was one of the first things, we, we did this thing for the International University, and once it started, developed this process, and believe it or not, they, um, they were trying, trying to save the avocado industry, because the trees would become diseased. And they thought, what if we could get a hold of the disease off of one of the trees? Because some trees would have it, but they would never show it, so, so until it was too late, so they, they did that, they processed it, thought the dogs had to detect that odor, and they saved the entire avocado industry. Those dogs were going through, and they could, they could hit on a tree that you didn't, that was diseased. And so, it's, it's been, um, well proven that this is really a, uh, an excellent tool. And as you can tell, now, we've seen the news lately, Massachusetts is up again with hospitalizations on the new streets. So, we don't know where all of this will go, but, um, whether this is going to be just sort of the regular kind of different strain of flu that's going to happen every year. But the, the canine will be able to, to detect those things as time goes on, and, um, depending on what new variants they will be.
So that's my, my question. So as the variants change, you're able, you have to retrain the dog, or do they pick up on it still?
No, they still, they still pick up on it, and, and Norton was very, um, very fortunate to, to meet Dr. Mills, who started this with, uh, the, with FIU, um, in Miami, and, and Dr. uh, Biata got to, uh, meet her too, and I'll tell you, she's, she explained it very well, and, and was, was absolutely amazing. So, basically, I think whether it's like the BA two variants, the new variant that's out right now, that's, um, that's out there, it's still the COVID odor. So the odor is really not changing, it's, it's, you know, still the same, same odor, just a different variance, and so we don't have to, to re, retrain it, which is, which is great, so.
So, I guess, maybe my own curiosity is, is how this program starts in Florida, but how does it come to our little county in Massachusetts? Like, how, how is that, like, you know, going up I ninety-five to, to, you know?
Well, actually, the way, the way, the way it happened was to, um, a friend of mine had seen something on TV about, they might be trying to develop this technique based on the avocado thing, um, this Florida university, down in, you know, International University down in Florida. And I said, who knows? So, I, I called down Florida University, said, hey, do it, or did you? I don't remember. I told him, I, I don't remember which one it was about. But, but I said, let's, I'm going to call them and find out, we can qualify. And they said, well, you all have the first, well, the first to add the variants. But you know what? We'll do you first. So, I said, we're in, tell us what we got to do. All started, uh, working with them on what, what it costs, what we do, and, um, so beneficial to them, beneficial to us, and beneficial now to, to our county. So, it really was just a, an opportunity that kind of presented itself at the right time, and looked like, hey, why not? Let's try to be the, be the ones who can get out there first and get it done, so.
There's two dogs, right?
Yes, yes.
Are they both your dogs?
No, no, uh, well, they belong to either of them.
Right.
Officer Santos, Teddy Santos has Duke, the yellow lab, and then I have Hunter.
Okay.
Yeah, there's Hunter, Hunter.
Oh, thanks.
They wanted to be appropriate for, for the winner.
For the winner.
I think it's important for the committee, and I know the committee knows a lot of this, but for the general public, then, um, thanks to the sheriff, thanks to Captain Douglas, where, I mean, you're off duty and texting me on weekends, uh, as well, so, um, what this really did for us is really supported, uh, Wade and our, uh, custodial uh, crew of men and women in, in making sure that any high areas, um, were thoroughly cleaned, not only during the day, but at the night shift, at the start of the school day the next day. Um, we had a couple of hits early on, as you remember from my, my communications, uh, and what that did is that just allowed us to make sure that we're targeting and cleaning areas, and it made us feel really good, because we started to have visits where the dogs were going all over the building with no hits, which makes the guys and the gals in the department, and I know Wade, I mean Wade, who just come into the office going, no hits, I'm happy. Um, so, so, um, it's, that's what it came about. It was a community service available to us. We just simply said, we'd like to be involved, no cost to us whatsoever. I guess, you know, my time and, and staff's time, the principal's time, just to make contacts and give me, but when these dogs walk in, unlike drug dogs, maybe we should talk about that too. Um, unlike drug dogs, these dogs, yes, but, but those, these dogs are just, they're just friendly. They're like going over to someone's house with a friendly lab, and so what happens is they ease the tension that was happening in the building. And during this type of incredible anxiety, any type of a third party that you can bring into the building that just makes everybody do this is a positive, right? I mean, these kids are just asking, can I touch it? Can I pet it? Yeah, can't. Can't do that with a drug dog.
So as soon as the dogs walk in, kids are able to approach them and pet them, they're?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And they're, and they're, um, they're great temperaments, but they're kind of, I mean, my dog sometimes can be like, I feel a little snooty. You know, she kind of comes in and will ignore, and not in a bad way, but she gets to work, and she does her thing, and when she's done with her job, then you can do it, you know, uh, have playtime, you know? Um, I just want to add too about the dogs, they were donated, uh, by a local, um, donor, so it was no, these dogs were no cost to the, uh, to the taxpayer and into the sheriff's office, uh, by a pedagogue, uh, excuse me, Dr. Dental, uh, Dr. uh, David Askey.
Doolan.
Yeah, the duo off for us, and his wife Jane. So, uh, my dog's actually named after their dog who passed away, the Hunter Foundation. So, my dog kind of has a little, you know, backstory to it, so these dogs at, at no cost.
One of the schools we were at, uh, I don't know, see, I can't remember, I can't remember if it's schools at the time, but we were in the library, uh, as Dr. Manuel was speaking. And, and, um, the kids were all sitting around in a circle, the teacher was reading with them or something, and so the, our, our COVID dog went through and hit on a book somewhere down, down the aisle somewhere, and must, went through the whole place, and that was the only place it was hit. Um, they, they marked it, and the works didn't take care of it, but then all the kids stayed because we, we walked the dog, so all like ten, fifteen kids got up and they all went, and that was Hunter, because Hunter, because Hunter took them, took them for a walk all the way around. And, and we actually had one, you want to tell a story about the one child that was really, uh, very anxious?
So, yeah, so, and this is why I think the sheriff wants to go towards the certification of, you know, therapy dogs as well, and when I spoke about this, I think his antennas went up and, and, you know, wanted to help out the community, but they, I, I won't mention the school, but there was a school in our, in our county that, um, there was a kid just having a real bad day. You know, uh, behavioral issues, some autism stuff, and the, uh, the SRO School Research Officer says, Cap, can you please bring Hunter, um, into this classroom with the students? I said, yeah, absolutely. So I bring Hunter in, and soon as that door opened, and he saw the dog, he just, he went right to the ground. It's actually kind of gives me goosebumps, but, um, went right to the ground, and went and saw him, so, and, um, it's a while ago, and then she, he just started hugging Hunter. And we were in there for about forty-five minutes, and, um, he took a Poland Springs bottle that was empty, and he just started playing fetch, and that was like Hunter's favorite toy. He just kept playing fetch back and forth with, with a Poland Springs bottle. But the point is, is the, the kid went from maxed out to right down to normalcy. And, you know, and then at the end of it all, I let him walk Hunter to my cruiser. So we walked through the whole school, and then he was so proud, and he's behind that fifteen-foot lead, and he, you know what I mean? So it, it's, it's a great, great tool, and even for staff, we've gone in, and there's been staff that have a bad day. You know, one lady in, in a school, her, her dog was at cancer, and, you know, and saw Hunter, and, you know, so it's, it's been, it's been great.
There was just one other thing if I could just add, it's kind of tangential pieces, but you, you spoke of autism. I don't know if you have any students here that have issues around autism, but just for your, your knowledge, um, we have, we have a program called Project Lifesaver that actually, um, works with families, puts the, the child, we do it for elderly people, suffer from dementia autism as well. They would get a bracelet, they wear, and that bracelet, if they were to wander, um, will give off a signal. As soon as we start responding, it'll pick up that signal coming in, or, or, I think, has more, the detectors. And we come triangulate coming in, we can generally get that, by that person within, um, a half hour. We're now working on, uh, the technology with the drone. So the drone, even though we're coming in, the drone would even, would even respond faster, because that will pick up the technology from the deep as well. I actually kind of decided, I don't agree on it because of the, the issue of autism, and maybe schools do a bit of that.
If no one's ever seen it before, because Bentley comes into the Mansfield schools all the time, and, and what you just described, I see all the time. And, and they have a Bentley award, and teachers can nominate kids, and then they get their picture taken with them, so like, it, it really makes, it's, it's amazing how quickly, you know, that dog walks into the room, and everybody sits on the rug and quiet waits, you know, almost like they're trained, you know, it's funny.
So, I mean, I, I think too, like we spoke last week, when we spoke for our X R O's or the week before, it's another positive interaction with law enforcement.
Yes.
For some of these kids that may not have had positive interactions in the past, you know, possibly older, you know, middle school, high school kids, but, you know, if we can start those interactions at the elementary level, you know, hopefully we can, you know, and, and you're doing a service for us, which we thank you for, but, you know, they're getting these positive interactions, which I think just builds on that future that, you know, I, I mean, you guys are taking, law enforcement's taking a hit, we all know that, but hopefully we can start turning that trend by having these interactions at this younger level.
I don't know if you all, uh, in the room have met Officer Santos, basically my partner in, in crime with, with Duke, and he's probably got one of the best personalities that you could ever, ever imagine.
Amazing.
Yeah, and he's, he's a great, great officer, and, and he's, he's always happy, he's always smiling, he's always willing to help, so, you know, that's the other thing, like you said, sir, respectfully, like you come in and it's not, oh, here's the drug dog, or here's the, you know, it, it's, you get smiley faces, smiley dogs, and, you know, it's just a great.
Given the pressures in the workplace today, you, you know, it was like, you're very, so, yeah, yeah, but even in the workplace, with the pressures and everything, not just in our place, but everywhere, people are down. You know, and some days are a little more stressful than others, even with adults.
You see, it just, it just lets the air out a little bit.
Yes.
So, we, we will be, um, working with the sheriff's office with therapeutic dogs, we'll absolutely extend ourselves there as well, because we see that as yet another relationship, but really, I mean, the wonderful thing for us is we're just trying to give tools to our staff, our custodians, our principals, our teachers, that just help kids. Uh, at the end of the day, it makes us feel safer, so we appreciate you folks taking the time today to come out.
I just had with this last meeting, just to say, again, I know Paul, but, but Superintendent Biata, the way he's embraced this program, looking for every opportunity to help these kids in this school system is really amazing, and I, I've seen the commitment and excitement in, in what you do and how you do it. It's, it's really very, very impressive, and all of you as well, you know, we, we've always believed that we're all in the public service business, we're all partners. We all, you know, we all look to help each other out, and in these times, it's even more important, but, uh, but you all help us as much as we help you, and God bless you for that, for, for all you do for these kids.
I just want to say to Wade too, I know Wade's in the back, but Wade, Wade's another one that always answers his emails. And he's an amazing, amazing man, he's got an amazing staff, and, um, probably one of the cleanest schools that I've been a part of and, and been involved, so hats off to Wade, and, and thank you, thank you so much.
Pledge of allegiance next week, Wade.
That's like, yeah.
Perfect title of a show, I think.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you. That's a compliment. Thank you very much, I mean, yeah, it's been, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a great, it's a great, yeah. It's a great, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All the council guys.
I'll be there.
No, not for, for you, you don't have to be, it's just.
Is it possible you're away next week?
It doesn't COVID, I'm saying. That's right.
All be away.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll be in there. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Shannon wants, Shannon wants the delight of the game. It's a great, it's a great, yeah, I love it.
Well, I will tell you, as, as the folks are in the, uh, when I, I went out to do masks, as you guys know, the other day, with about thirty-five bucks, to do our personal college kickoff and message and traditions, appreciate it, by the way. But one of the things that occurred is that new mask during finals, maybe you guys have all these twenty-five, that are, I mean, so, I was disappointed, I didn't bring the dogs. That desire, I didn't have to give a political thing, because it's six hours, and then four hours.
Have a great vacation, buddy.
I'm sure Shannon, Shannon watching.
Shannon was all kidding.
We'll bring it, we'll go for you, go. Shannon, you're going to fly down there, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, that was nice. Um, next up, we have our student representative updates. Do we have Malia and Zoe off?
Hi, yeah, we're here. Um, I think Malia's gonna go first, but like, just like a little heads up, um, the kids are very ready for break. Um, there hasn't been a lot going on. Um, it's just been testing, like MCAS and all that, so, um, we're hoping to have a little bit more of a next meeting, but this one, we just wanted to get everyone through break and, um, see what's been going on or what's going to happen pretty soon, but Malia's starting with, uh, JCS, I think.
Yeah, so, hi guys. So for the JCS, um, Dr. Marcus said that the booster's on, fun run, run this week. Altogether, they've raised over twenty-five thousand towards enrichment, arts, and community activities. Eighty-five percent of the students registered, bringing in funds from twenty-eight states and three countries. Pre-K ran today, and, uh, K through third is running tomorrow. Getting ready for their first ever sea turtle day after vacation, because I think, I think two meetings ago, we talked about how they have an official animal now, which is super cute. Um, at the big event, students will celebrate the history of JCS, play some fun games, and learn about the eighteen sea turtles we have been able to stop as a school. Um, Zoe's going to do the LGN.
Um, yeah, so LGN, they also, they just finished, um, LA MCAS this week. Um, they said that the children did an amazing job with focusing and working hard on that. Um, but they, in, the kindergarten enjoyed rainforest reptiles and their in-school field trips, that was pretty fun for them. Um, and they wanted to thank the LGN PTC for funding the event. And then overall, um, second grade has been busy writing poetry, and classrooms conducted poetry slams for their peers. So that was good, that they're still learning, even though break's coming, it's almost there. Malia has the yell.
So, um, they did a, the Yale library has gotten a major facelift, uh, Mrs. Dermis, I hope I'm saying that right. Uh, and the PTO volunteers, Wade Lazard and the Yale studio staff have really done an amazing job of making their library an incredible place for students to come. Thank you to all. Mr. Gigan hosted a hashtag PBIS challenge pizza party for twelve fourth-grade students and twelve fifth-grade students who won their chance with a gold hashtag drawing. If a teacher caught students going above and beyond being respectful, responsible, or safe, they earned a special gold hashtag to be put in the drawing. Three winners from each grade were chosen each Friday of March to enjoy pizza with the principal and friends. And then he said, thank you to the Yale PTO, who also sponsored this event. Um, and Zoe's going to cover the middle school.
Um, yeah, so, middle school, um, they wanted to say a huge thanks and congratulations to the whole NMS community for having a successful parent board fundraiser. Um, and also congratulations to Benson Chang, um, who is their Project Three Fifty-One ambassador. And I think he got fifty bags of clothing donated, um, for, for his spring service projects, that was really good to see. Um, and then also congratulations to the NMS Unified Basketball Team on the successful completion of their inaugural season. Um, that was really great to see, like, I know, like, we had, uh, unified basketball at the high school, and those, um, games are pretty fun to watch, especially when they did it at the pep rally a few years back, um, but I know, like, so at the superintendent's meeting with, uh, Dr. Biata and a few student representatives from each grade, we had talked about how some of these, um, like, kids with disabilities, special needs, there, it's been a lot of bullying happening. So I know it's like a downside to all this, but it was really good to see that they have unified basketball again. I know they, um, at the high school, they used to have unified track. I don't think that's happening again this year, so it's a little discouraging, um, that people aren't as invested and involved anymore. Um, Best Buddies didn't run this year, so usually, um, kids, at least like five to ten kids would go during the LOB period, and they would go and play games with them, and just kind of make them feel more involved in their high school life. Um, I know, like, I love doing that, but this year, it didn't start up because we had a weird LOB period, um, it wasn't the past two years because of COVID. Um, but hopefully it starts up again. I'm not sure how it's going to go with LOB being more of a learning time, but, um, that's definitely something like, I noticed, and, um, so I just wanted to bring that up, and I, I don't know if Dr. Biata, if you want to elaborate on what the kids had said about the bullying happening, but it might just be a little more discussed, um, on the half-day this Friday.
And, um, I have a student, as you know, we, I have a six-to-twelve student advisory, uh, committee, uh, we had town spot pizza this week, uh, which was kind of cool. Um, most of them know the new town spot. We, we hit upon a couple of topics that the students, it's their, it's their agenda, it's really not my agenda. Um, they can bring up any topics that they want, they do it very professionally, but what I heard was, um, some real concern around, of course, the area vaping in the bathrooms, that was like probably, if not one A, one B, and then the issue of making sure that students who do have learning disabilities aren't feeling left out, if you will, are being continuously supported and challenged, if you will, because we haven't had things like Best Buddies, because we haven't had things like some of the right stuff. And again, it's no, there's no finger to point, it's just what's been going on. Um, there is some concerns around. Um, there is some concerns around, uh, students, uh, if you will, and this is more of a district-wide discussion, around what to do is to support students once they are in fact, um, if not bullied, harassed, if not harassed, picked on, whatever the, the combination may be. Um, and how can we as a school be more proactive in those approaches? So, we put that out through our administrative. Um, it's gonna be a topic of discussion in our upcoming meeting. Um, some of these events are singular, some of them are repetitive. Uh, we've had discipline issues around it, you know, we've had to suspend students, we've had to bring in families and all of that stuff. Um, but Zoe's right, we need a more, uh, effort, uh, this Friday, tomorrow. The, at least the high school, they're spending time on creating ideas around the bathroom issues with vaping, which continues to be a problem. Concern around, uh, any other illegal substances. Uh, you know, as I said earlier, uh, for me, I want the therapeutic dogs, but we are open for drug searches if needed and when needed. We've done it before, as the committee knows. Um, and then lastly, how do we really try to get, um, the bystanders, if you will, the students that don't vape, the students that don't misuse the bathroom? How do they try to come together and say, I've had enough of this? You know, if you wanna vape, go to your own house and vape, just let me use the bathroom, please. Um, so we have some thoughts that we're gonna present to the committee. Uh, we're not just gonna let this go until next year. We wanna, uh, try to make some changes. As you know, I've already spoken about, to you about bathrooms being closed. I'll take the heat for that. There could be some border health issues with that. There could be some parents upset with that, but I have to make a priority around public safety uh, for kids who right now won't use the bathroom all day, all day, which can't be possibly good for people. Um, so we'll come back to the full committee, uh, on behalf of the student advisory that really is a group that says we need something and we need it now. So, thanks, Zoe.
Yeah, no problem. I just wanted to bring it up, um, also, but we are having, um, Best Buddies Prom is happening April twenty-ninth, I think. Um, so a few students from the high school are actually joining. It's at Pembroke High, I think. So, a bunch of, um, different high schools are joining in and it's carnival themed and, um, it should be a really good event. I know I went, uh, two years ago when they had it. It was at, uh, Algonquin. Um, it was, it's pretty good to get everyone involved, but it just doesn't seem to be as involved in our school as it used to be. Um, it's not really talked about as much. So, hopefully it can change a little bit more, um, with now everything being a little lifted and less restrictions. But, yeah, I definitely wanted to bring that up. Um, I'm gonna transfer into the high school, which definitely you talked about the bathrooms, that situation is just a big problem overall. Um, I know, like, I don't even go to the bathroom. Um, it's just, you just know, it's like, we, we have jokes now, like, the smokies are in there. It's just, you don't, you don't go in there anymore. So, um, hopefully that changes. But, um, a big positive note is that prom, that was so much fun. Um, I know Dr. Beata was there. Um, a lot of the administrators came and the teachers, they were on the dance floor with us. Um, but three hundred seventy, seventeen kids, it was awesome. Um, definitely a lot of fun. Um, the DJ was really getting into it. He loved this job. Um, but yeah, good food, definitely good ice cream. Um, but, so that was like really good for the class, um, Malia's class officers. They did a great job organizing that and putting that together. Um, and then also, um, I know you had talked about the trip to UMass Amherst, but they also just had Assumption College. And so, when the students like went to college, see what it's like, um, it's like organized with the school. So, it gives the kids the opportunity to see what, um, college is gonna be like and kind of get a taste for it. But also, I know today, we just had the job fair. Um, so the juniors, um, all, all the juniors, all the juniors, um, attended the fair. Um, all the juniors attended. It was really good. Um, the FBI was there, so that was kind of cool. Um, but it gives everyone an opportunity to see what else, um, what other options there are instead of just college. So, um, I know that was pretty positive hearing all the kids come back. Um, a few seniors went and some sophomores as well. But Malia, I know you went, um, so I don't know if you have anything to talk about that, but I think that's it.
Yeah, I did. Um, it was, it was nice. It was a lot of, uh, like army type of stuff, definitely some difference in the career path. Um, yeah, the prom, just kind of, you know, wrap up stuff before April break. I know AP, AP kids are all getting ready. I'm starting all my reviews and stuff. So, it's, um, crunch time for us right now, but, you know, break is almost here. So, yeah, I, I think that's pretty much it. We have the Mott Crash tomorrow too at the high school. Um, like the, like about like dangerous driving or reckless driving, I think. Um, yeah, so, it's pretty much.
I just wanted to mention, uh, uh, these two young ladies look great at the prom. And, uh, and Zoe, are you ready to make an announcement yet about next year? Is there, have you made an announcement?
I was thinking about putting her on the spot and I was like, should I do it?
Where's Zoe?
I'm going.
Zoe, where?
She's entering the door.
Oh, she's not there? She's entering the door? That's all right, next meeting.
So, so who is, Malia, you still there?
Yeah.
So, who is the, who is the best non-student dancer at the prom?
Well, if you or I couldn't go, then.
Well, clearly, we weren't there to, to cut the rug, but, so who was the best, like, teacher or was Joe the best, Dr. Beata, was he the best dancer? Who was the best, uh, non-student dancer?
Um.
She's gonna kill you if you get home.
You know what?
Pass, pass, pass. All right, fair enough. All right, thank you guys very much. I appreciate that. Uh, and we'll move on now. I don't need to throw these guys.
Gretchen, I, I want that.
All right, is there a file and I will, uh, I will announce the agenda item. Next up, we have the recognition of the national track athletes. Gretchen, I'll turn this over to you.
Um, I'm gonna just, um, I am actually gonna turn it over to Coach, Coach Alex. Yes.
So, um, our athletes here, Julian Striner, Ally Murphy, Shaylee Owens and Jay Bobelski, all qualified individually as well as a collective relay team for the national championships in New York this past March. Two of them individually also advanced through, uh, the All-State Championships as well as the New England Championships. Ally Murphy and Shay Bobelski both are in fourth place in their respective events at the New England Championships. And then all four of them together, uh, qualified for the sprint medley relay in the New Balance Indoor National Championships up in New York. We qualified a team for essentially every year over the past five years, obviously with the COVID year being the exception. Um, and this squad did phenomenal in qualifying despite a small hiccup in the race that almost jeopardized our qualification. We still ended up winning our, the Division Five State Relay Meet, um, that earned us qualification for the Rising Stars Division at the national championships, where at the national championships, we ran, I believe, our second best time in school history. It was four sixteen something, four sixteen and change, that ended up earning all four of them, um, fifth place overall in the championship race that the same teams from across the country, as far south as Florida, as far west as California. So, we are incredibly proud of everything that, um, our four ladies have been able to do this past indoor season, looking to continue forward through this outdoor season. They've been a very strong group that's been continuing to bring the positive attitude and energy to the track and field program. Um, and they're all still, uh, juniors and sophomores. So, we still have another year of them, which we're super excited to see what else they can do.
So, let me just start off by saying congratulations on the accomplishments. That is absolutely phenomenal. There's no way you could say we had a hiccup and not.
It was, it was a so, uh, the way the sprint medley relay works, it's, it's, um, it, it is a combination of distances that, um, add up to, I think it's sixteen, sixteen hundred meters. It's a two hundred meter leg followed by a two hundred meter leg followed by a four hundred meter leg followed by an eight hundred meter leg. So, it's, uh, short sprints to long sprints to middle distance. Um, and so with the, um, with it going to two, four, eight, our first, um, leg, Shaylee Owens, no, sorry, it's Julian Striner, um, took, uh, took, uh, out of the box phenomenal. She ran her heart out over the first hundred fifty meters. Um, was in front by a good twenty, thirty meters. And then the last fifty meters in the race, she definitely started to feel the impact of the race coming back on her. Uh, and so as she was getting up the curve to make the first exchange to our second two hundred meter leg Shaylee Owens, um, her leg started to kind of give out from underneath her, um, and she fell prior to handing the baton off to Shaylee. Um, in a relay race, you have a certain zone that you need to exchange the baton in, otherwise you end up being disqualified. Fortunately, she fell within the zone. Shaylee went from trying to get the baton to a complete stop, turning around, crying the baton, handing it out, um, crying baton out of Joe's hands and continuing forward, um, in the race. Able to make up a ton of time. Uh, the announcers didn't even really give us a shot, but with perseverance from Shaylee, a very strong leg by Ally Murphy and then Shay Bobelski just bringing it home, we were able to not only win the meet and squeeze under the qualifying standard by about a couple of tenths of a second. So.
I mean, that's an amazing story.
Just come on, Zoe.
The sprint medley relay always has some sort of hiccup in our history, but we've always been able to somehow get it all together and to ultimately get to the national championships.
Julian, were you okay after you?
I got this huge mark, like, all down my leg. It was all good, though.
Okay. Talk about perseverance. Something happened, you guys just keep on, you know, going. So, that, that's awesome.
Right. We always shed tears after an SMR. They're typically very, very frightened tears, waiting to see if you get disqualified, followed by very happy tears of seeing not only that we do not disqualify, but we also get underneath the qualifying standard.
Right, because, uh, I guess it was three years ago or four years ago, we almost got disqualified because we outright won. However, we had a very exuberant athlete who was on the track.
Yeah, he was on the infield cheering on the team and he was running alongside the team, which they say that it's, you know, pacing the athletes, whereas in true reality, it's not really. Um, that group broke the state relay record and we were approached by the officials saying that we were gonna, he was gonna have to disqualify us because of that incident. Um, I believe Ally Murphy was actually on that team. We, everyone started crying. Um, we all went to apologize. Uh, the coach from Situate, who wasn't even in the race, came out of the stands and was arguing on our behalf. And then the official decided to overturn it and let the results stand. So, everyone continued to cry, but. The SMR is a very, it's a very emotional, uh, race that really brings together the varieties of the running on the track. But we are very proud that we still were able to qualify, compete, place, and are looking to do the same, uh, heading into outdoors as well.
How many, uh, how many winter track athletes do we have, like ballpark?
Um, this past winter, we had about twenty-two girls and about thirty-five, forty boys. Um, this outdoor season, we are looking at a hundred total, about, uh, sixty, forty split.
Yeah.
Um.
It's always amazing how many kids in Norton love to run.
Oh, yeah.
I, I see you guys running down the street. I'm always amazed because for running, for me, it's usually somebody chasing them. Yeah, I've never been into that zone, but watching you guys train on the, on the streets, it's awesome.
It's definitely, definitely get big props from the middle school program, both on the cross-country side, um, and the track side that has been trying, trying to get restarted back up. Uh, they've provided a lot of, um, they've, they've been able to provide a nice filler program to us, which has been very helpful. Um, and also to get that full sense of the track cross-country sport being one of, you know, this is where you can make a lot of really nice friends that are goal-oriented and traditionally very strong students as well. So, it encourages a very positive atmosphere, a very positive lifestyle, which we are fortunate to see a lot of our athletes continue on at the high school.
It's great, it's great.
It's not just love to run. They're good. Like, we punch above our weight when it comes to.
Oh, yeah.
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 Yeah. For, for a small town, we seem to do very, very well. I don't know what it is. Maybe it's great coaching, but, you know, I gotta think that it's gotta be talent for kids too.
Oh, I think, I think, I think before the, the programs were at the middle school, it was getting strong and it was, but all I did was just help it a lot. And then, of course, you have coaches that just put in the extra time and effort and athletes that follow the protocols and so on. I mean, it's, you know, when you, when you start to look at GPAs on the track team, it's always interesting to see how, how good these student athletes are as students.
And that's the thing, I mean, track and field, it's, it's not something you really experience in high school. I mean, I, I did the throwing events when I was in high school, but like, I never threw a javelin or shot. I didn't know what the hell to wear. You know, and then I did it in high school and I wasn't any good, but I did it, you know, but it's just, you just, oh, I'm gonna go try that because I didn't do anything else in the spring.
And you gotta remember, a lot of the students that are out are, are, are competing at different levels and most of it is competing against themselves to get better, right? And so, it is a, that's, I think, and that's the best, is how you're trying, you know, you're trying to improve your time, trying to, you know, get throws and all that stuff, so. So, we're here tonight to recognize, um, each of these wonderful athletes for excellence during the twenty-one, twenty-two winter track and field season. Of course, you heard the story of how well they, they did. So, we have a certificate for each of you, resume builder. Uh, she's, she's so young, right? College competition. So, this one is to Julian, uh, Striner, for excellence during the twenty-one, twenty-two winter track and field season. We'll do these. We'll do a group picture. Want to do a group picture?
Yeah. Like, I remember my. Well, Shay.
Congrats from the number one team. Thank you for here.
And it's a surprise, Ally. She's doing a good job.
We're gonna go in front there, take, take a quick shot. My favorite honor of the year.
My show ladies.
So, yes, so who runs first? Who runs first? Who runs second? Who runs third? You run first? I'm fifth now. No way I'm running anywhere. I don't run. Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Congratulations to the family members in the back. Great minutes. Thanks, ladies, very much. Thank you so much. Pleasure and have a great.
Surprise for you for a free day off of school. You guys are gonna go out to the parking lot and race Dr. Beata.
Name the distance. We'll take this, we could beat everybody up here. I'll pass for about ten feet.
All right. Next up, we have the introduction of the new LG Morse elementary students to the principal.
Art of Man. Thank you so much. Um, we had a, as you know, a very thorough process, in my opinion, the second time that we've done this to our organization, Nesdeck, uh, that we have members with. They led all the public relations pieces. Uh, Dr. O'Neil put together all of the different folks to come into the room, parents, teachers, um, staff, um, and collated, uh, the applicants from there interviewed. Uh, it was supposed to be six, became five, and from there, four to three, of which one person, uh, dropped for another job. So, as you know, pretty competitive. All three candidates, by the way, were finalists, uh, or two of the three candidates were finalists in other places. But we had this intriguing situation, um, with one of the candidates and that was a sitting principal, um, uh, Mr. Tom Higgins, who's here today, who comes to us from Eastern Public Schools. Um, unfortunately, he's also at Stonehill College, but that's. So, he has a tax from, uh, Pittsburgh State, a master's degree, um, from, uh, Pittsburgh as well, my alma mater, uh, Stonehill College Master in Cross Country Education. He's fully certified, uh, been in the East Public Schools, uh, for his entire career. A member of, I'm a, uh, MSAA, uh, member of the Seoul Leadership Co-Part and you see his resume that lists. Uh, I spoke to, um, the superintendent, who regards him very highly. Nice to see him though. Um, but, uh, there's still building project going on and, and bigger elements. Tom really likes and does well with a smaller school, if you will. That's what we have. So, tonight, I, I present to you science, hill and delivered for July first, Mr. Tom Higgins, which happens to be my birthday, which is. Do you want to work on your birthday or not? It's nice.
You see what you do.
Uh, thank you so much for, for having me tonight. And I commended the team, you know, Janet O'Neil and, and the interview team for such a comprehensive. Uh thank you so much for for having me tonight and I commend the team, you know, Jen O'Neill and and the interview team for such a comprehensive search. From start to finish, it was a great experience for me. Like Joe said, I've been in Eastern for twenty two years. I started there as a student teacher and um have have spent my entire career there. So to make this change a little bittersweet, but it's a wonderful opportunity for me. Um and having that Stonehill connection, Jen reached out to me and and we had a conversation about it and was encouraged to apply. I am passionate about that small school neighborhood field, which is the LGM and the the privilege of of visiting last week. And um so many highlights throughout the day, a few of which I'll mention. One kindergarten friend uh in music class, we walked in and he saw me and um besides being six ten, I'm I'm currently on crutches and with a boot. Um he just looked up and said, excuse me, big guy. I just love that that age elementary education, that's that's where my passion lies. I've been there my entire career. Um for those those interactions and and I love working with children. I love supporting people who work with children. Um and the teachers were just so welcoming, everyone was, um faculty to staff. The school is beautiful. I know it's an older building. Um I've spent primarily my entire career in older buildings to know what that's. That's like the upkeep of of those places and it is pristine. Mr. Joe and the team there, I have done an amazing job and. I look forward to to joining the team and and you know, supporting ways that that I can and um. I'm saying to Jen, the way I overshoot it, my new my new bosses have to drive me around because I can't drive right now. But that says a lot about your district as well, like how many assistant superintendents feel like your house.
We can give all the precious drivers.
But I yeah, I I look forward to to joining the team, as I said, and and uh I hope to spend my the rest of my career here. I mean, I um I know I look young, I have sixteen year old daughter and a sophomore at Southeastern, uh eighth grader at Walters Middle School. And uh fifth grader at the Jordan Jackson in Mansfield and three, I think, four miles down the road. Yeah, three daughters is not the you can say or do that's gonna scare me with. I feel like I'm I'm very well prepared for for joining the team and and really look forward to it, so thank you so much.
Welcome.
Just wanna share a quick story with you uh another later to point you ahead. I received an email. From a parent um who now lives in Norton that lived in Eastern and went to Tom's school and.
As a student?
That no, their child went to went to kindergarten at Tom's school. Thank you for that.
Let's say twenty two years.
And uh and the child is so excited about Mr. Higgins joining, so they wrote a letter to me. You know, just talk to the and please hire him, you know, you know, these like please, you know, it'd be wonderful and all this stuff. So clearly, anytime you get one of those letters, uh you know, people go out and above, you know that the the guy that you're hiring, the person that you hired is a child centered person. That's really important for that age level. I I think couldn't have two more uh uh early ed K to three. You know, pro kids and Marty's here tonight for five, I can say just all three of them, very pro child, try to support the staff every day. And that's that's a good thing. So welcome Tom and and the family uh to Lancer Nation. He's already wearing purple, so I'm impressed. And uh and.
Well, how was how was the the interest in the position? So.
Um, yeah, we, yeah, so we actually had nineteen outfits.
I heard eighteen.
Okay, yes. I'm like, that seems like a lot. Um and and so ultimately, um the LGN search community was was very passionate about. Um finding a leader that understood the elementary culture, that had experience either as a teacher there. Preferably as a teacher and as a leader at the elementary level and many of the applicants that we had didn't have that background. People were coming from those for our high school background and that wasn't something that they were interested in. Um you know, we we had, you know, of the candidates that we interviewed, we had a very strong pool overall. Um and ultimately, when they, you know, it came down to the finalists, they felt very strongly and very confident that other people that they were forwarding to Joe. We did whole days of site visits last week. We had one on Monday and then Tom came on Wednesday um. And the amount of feedback that Joe and I received from the staff. Um and from families as well, because I also did the virtual parent forums. Um and then we sent up the recorded sessions to families if they weren't able to make it. Was was very overwhelming in response to they they just felt that Tom was the right fit for the LGN. Um they felt that he had.
We received two emails too.
Embodied that whole big school.
I actually ran into a staff member at a soccer game, not even in Norton, and they were like, I don't think it's like, can you tell me, can you tell me? And and you were referred by her, which is, you know, just to hear that the right people and the staff appreciates for getting the positions that we want to fill.
So Joe did not, Joe held his cards very close to his chest all weekend long and didn't say a word and just invited the LGN staff. To the library on Monday afternoon to meet their new principal, but did not, you know, use any pronouns and didn't say anything. And so when people would come into the library, they would kind of like sneak around the door and then they're like, yes. There was a lot of that going on and it was it was really nice for me to see. Um and I and I think I hope it was really nice for Tom to see.
I shared with them in the moment that that makes, you know, you feel good as a leader of the people and they they met me one day.
Yeah.
And then, you know, the committee got a chance to, you know, do the interview on Zoom and um. But yeah, I said to them that we we refer to as filling my filling our buckets at Brawl Hall, you know, bucket fillers pledge we do every day. And they really, I mean, there was a few woo-hoo's as well.
There was, and there was a little boy that, that's who we were walking in. He said, hi, Mr. Higgins. I'm like, how big is he?
So welcome.
Well, I I hope everybody, you know, stays in their position for a very long time because three principal searches, four years of interviews, correct? Because it was two for the high school and then the JCS.
Yeah, this this completes your total turnover of principalships.
It better, it better. You better not have any ideas over there.
So really lucky and we have experience at the principal level now, which I think will only make the district uh grow and get better.
Yeah.
Well, well, yeah, welcome aboard. Uh I I do think. You know, you you talked about the small school field and and I will say like the L the LG is particularly, I think, really um really encompasses kind of a neighborhood school. More so even, you know, the JCS is a great school. My kids went there and everything, but but the LG really does kind of define as as a as a neighborhood school, so I think you'll be able to get that. Um I I honestly, I think we're, I think we're an excellent district and and I'm not just saying that and Joe will tell you, I'm a straight shooter. If I thought we sucked, I'd say we suck, you know, but we are, we are an excellent district. Um I I think that the school committee particularly has has the back of the staff. Um and and obviously, you know, we're always child focused, but at the same time, we understand that, you know, we're running a district here. So we'll always have you back um as long as you're doing the right thing for us and you know, could could be happy to have you here. So welcome aboard.
Isn't there a slogan, big school, no, little school, big. Yeah.
Little school, big principal. Uh is he gonna heal in time for the uh Icar games?
I might invite him to the game to be my assistant coach and the people can just see. He must have played basketball.
Yeah, I play a little bit, yeah.
Is that what happened?
I wish it were a cool story. It was like old man slips on ice while walking dog.
So we have a charity basketball game and boy, that is gonna be sweet.
He's a year away, but when it comes to.
It's gonna be a lot of fun.
Sorry, we have next week, so.
Why can't we keep him in hiding for years?
Don't stay it up for years.
I'm pretty sure the word is already.
Press conferences will go out tomorrow.
Well, wel- welcome, welcome aboard. Uh happy to have you here. Okay, uh next up, we're gonna move on to the vote on the school committee meeting dates for twenty two twenty school year. Is that what you mean?
This is week two, week four. I'm just trying to be standard so that we have a fixed schedule. We know that always works, I mean, not COVID especially. Um and I guess if needed in there, as you know, the the chair controlled dates. If we have to have dates like an October time meeting or May time meeting or all that stuff, we just have those. But these right now are your recommended dates and you should hope that so.
Okay, Heather, any objections to the dates?
Are we doing the road show at the beginning and the end or just at the beginning?
Well, just at the beginning, uh but again, it'll be up to the committee if you wanna do the road show again. I'm happy to do that. Getting a vote.
No issues.
Did we do the road show at the end before?
Other than.
No, it was at the beginning.
Right, but there's always.
Okay, I was trying to get it again.
Yeah, no, it's just because of COVID, we haven't seen the buildings in so long.
Right. Well, I think it was always tough to do at the beginning of the year because it's hard to be like introduced and what's going on in the school if it's like.
Opening a school report in November.
Yeah, exactly. Or opening a school report three days later.
And the LG was always tough because, yeah, you you got there and they're like, nothing, you have it, yeah.
Just open the doors, yeah.
The first day of buses was tough, uh that's it. Okay, um I would entertain a motion to approve the dates uh as in our packet.
Salute.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Announce. Okay, next up, we have the vote uh to appoint the superintendents and board directors of Reed's Collaborative for twenty two twenty three. Joe, do I need to read this prior to vote?
I will read it for you if you'd like.
Uh sure, come on.
So as as required, all Reed's Collaborative board members needs to be appointed annually. Uh they the appointment is direct is to the board of directors of the Collaborative by the school committee pursuant to chapters. Forty, section forty is amended by chapter forty three of the Acts of two thousand twelve. Members of the board of directors at Reed's Collaborative to be appointed annually. Joseph Byer is appointed to serve as non-public school representative on the board of directors of Reed's Collaborative in accordance with Mass General Laws, chapter seven, section forty is amended by chapter forty three of the Acts of two thousand twelve, in twenty two twenty three.
Is there any questions on this?
No.
No. Uh I would entertain a motion to appoint Joseph Byer to serve as representative on the board of directors of Reed's Collaborative twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year.
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Announce. Next up, the vote to appoint superintendent of the board of directors of By County Collaborative, Fico.
As per the prior pursuant to chapter forty, forty, section forty is amended by chapter forty three of the Acts of two thousand twelve. Members of the board of directors at By County Collaborative to be appointed annually. Joseph Byer is appointed to serve as a non-public school representative on the board of directors of By County Collaborative in accordance with Mass General Laws, forty, section forty. As amended by chapter forty three of the Acts of two thousand twelve, and I should say for the twenty two twenty three school year.
Yeah, uh any discussion on this? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to appoint Joseph Byer to serve as representative of the board of directors of Fico County Collaborative for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year.
Salute.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Announce.
Is that, is that, is it no vote to personal?
Yes.
Okay, next up, we have uh Dr. Byetta has a conflict of interest disclosure.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um asking for Mass General Laws, chapter uh two sixty eight A, please accept this memo as my notification to the Northern School Committee. And the town knowing that my daughter Margaret Byetta, a student at Northern High School, has been recommended by Mr. Cersei, Director of Personnel Services and Ms. Russo, Speciality Coordinator. To be hired at the rate of fourteen dollars and twenty five cents per hour as a student assistant in the extended school year program. The program runs from July fifth to August sixth, Tuesday through Thursday from seven forty five to twelve fifteen PM. Uh as you know, uh I am appointing, I am received the final letter. She is my daughter. I have to go on record that um Maggie is, this will be her second year. So uh that's the disclosure that does require both.
Sounds shady and it reaches an expertise. An absolute beauty. Wonderful girl.
So do we have to do that if our kids work summers?
Uh no, because you don't appoint them.
Okay.
I appoint them as that.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that?
No.
No. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to accept the uh conflict of interest disclosure for the extended school year program. So second?
Second.
All those in favor? Oppose? Announce. Uh next up, we have other business.
Nope. Eleven.
Oh, sorry. Uh look, sorry, vote to recognize speech, language, pathology assistants uh and certified occupational therapist assistants, unionization and enter contract negotiations.
Mr. Chairman, this is a formal process that you know for prior communication with the board and uh our discussion. Um prior in executive session, which is step one, um the board is, I'm recommending that the school committee recognize the speech, language, pathology assistants and certified occupational therapists assistants. For unionization and to enter into contract negotiations um as soon as available.
Does anybody have any questions on this? No comments, nope. Seeing none, I would entertain uh we're we're entertaining a motion to recognize the unionization and enter into corporate negotiations.
Correct.
Okay, uh would entertain a motion, honestly. Salute. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Announce. Now, we're on to other business.
Um in front of you earlier this evening, I just provided you the general list of the ARPA list that we provided to Mr. Units. Um and uh town hall uh when we spoke last week. Um there'll be some changes to these because it's a working document. Um you'll see tonight and you'll walk through one major issue that we have to address as part of the sewer connection is the potential. That rainwater is actually collected from the rooftop, comes into the building and is connected to the sewer lines and that can't happen. Um we don't know that to be true. Uh we have to hire someone to come in and do that, study it, give give uh examples of how we take care of it. Or we can actually make the connection. It'll actually bring up that cost, so I'm glad that we found out about that now instead of uh later. But you'll hear more about that in the near future, but it's just a working list. The board has this uh to select for to get the vote on any items in terms of final uh support.
And and I wanted to just be very clear that this is not an expectation list. There's simply options for them to work that. We're not expecting in any way, shape or form to get resolved.
Correct, we are simply.
Want somebody to think that we are asking for that because we're not, we're just simply just here are things that.
We agree.
Okay, um any other business, Joe?
No, no, I don't.
Okay, uh so we're going to.
I just have one thing.
Oh.
If you don't mind, yeah. Um I just want to apologize to the administration staff, parents and my colleagues. Um this was definitely not the winter I expected to have between the loss of my father and my husband's hospitalization that he's still recovering from. Um I was unable to attend our meetings in person. I did attend most of them by zul, but I realized that that's not the same thing. So I know I put extra extra pieces on people, so I apologize for that. But all that being said, I want to give a huge thank you to uh the same people, the NTA, um staff members. For the outpouring of prayers, calls, check in the messages that have been sent to myself and my family members during this extremely difficult time. Um the thoughtfulness, the thoughtfulness and caring certainly helped us get through a really dark time and we're certainly blessed to live in such a thoughtful. I just want to say thank you.
Nice to.
Catherine, you have absolutely nothing to apologize.
Yeah, seriously.
Not accept your.
Awesome, thank you.
Uh okay.
Can I just um I just wanna put another plug in for It Takes Community. We're three weeks out um from tomorrow night will be the nineteenth annual It Takes Community Basketball Game. We have a ton of teachers this year. So much so that we had to put all the high school students on the police team, so this has gotta be quite the game.
Sure.
May sixth, so.
I'll be there.
Starts at seven o'clock. Um tickets are still on sale. You can get them through Venmo. You can get them through the schools. Just send money in um.
So if you did Venmo when you shop at the door and you just have a name.
You're we're we have a guest list. Yeah, so your name will be on the guest list, so um just looking to really sell tickets the next uh three weeks. Just asking principals to kind of talk it up in the schools, our teachers talk it up in the schools, um and we have teachers from every school. It's it's amazing, right? So it it should be a lot of fun.
Good. Anything else? No. Okay, uh so our next meeting is going to be Thursday, April twenty eighth at the JCS Library at six o'clock. We are going to now motion to adjourn not to um meeting, correct?
Correct, you're gonna you're gonna motion to complete the building walkthrough of the of the Yell Elementary School and not to return to an opening meeting after the end of the tour.
Okay, motion to adjourn and take the take part in the building walkthrough for the H A L, uh not to return.
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Announce. All right.
Thank you all very much.